Good evening and welcome to the meeting in North Penn School District Board of School Directors, November 12th work session. Tonight is our regularly scheduled work session. The meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they're being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience of citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board. The board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker, and this is in reference to Board Policy 8340. Welcome. I would like to start this meeting off with a pledge of allegiance led by Susan Leonard.
(inaudible)
All right, on the work session agenda tonight, good evening. We're going to start off, Dr. Dietrich, you have a presentation about Hatfield.
We do. Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a presentation this evening on the Hatfield additions and renovation design concept, and that discussion will be led by Mr. Strobel and by Peter Medica of Bennett Associates. So Peter, if you're ready, and John, show is yours.
Yeah, we're having PowerPoint. Just wanted to say that with the input of the Hatfield staff and administration at Hatfield and Penfield and others from home and school, we've put together this design proposal. Support Services saw it two weeks ago, and we're bringing it forward to you today for your approval. And I'll turn it over to Pete.
(inaudible)
Good evening. with final design development level meetings with staff at Hatfield Elementary School. We've also met over at Penfield with staff to coordinate between the buildings for the temporary mod concepts, and at the end of the Hatfield presentation, we'll show you where things are headed with the modular temporary classroom concepts at Penfield Middle School. This is the existing Hatfield site. Everybody's orientation, Fairgrounds Road here along the top, the baseball field here to the right of the school, the brown building, of course, that's Hatfield Elementary. One of the major issues we were charged to look at for the site at Hatfield was the relationship of parking, I'm sorry, drop-off between the bus loop, which is along the front of the school, and the parent drop-off, which is off to the left here, and how they crisscross here at the front of the school as they all exit the site here on the right side onto Fairground Road. In addition to that, there's some parking availability issues at the site. Working with staff, what we did to rectify this situation is to propose to maintain a bus loop drop-off in front of the school, but to introduce an additional incoming lane to the parent drop-off loop here, and then allow them to come back out to Fairgrounds in their own driveway and have left-turn, right-turn lanes coming out of the site. So this will allow parents to have their own loop, leave the site without having to cross over the bus loop here at the front of the school. We will allow for some crossover traffic for overflow events. There'll be a small gate that'll help manage traffic on-site to let you take advantage of that without obviously having to exit the facility and come back in again. To improve the parking conditions, we're proposing that a small parking lot between the baseball fields and the school to increase parking there. That adds about 48 net spaces overall to the parking at Penfield, Hatfield, for the day-to-day use. That parking lot does not disrupt in any way the baseball layouts or the playgrounds as we're going to be rebuilding playgrounds with current equipment over on the left side of the site there. This is an image of the existing first floor of Hatfield, just for everybody's orientation. This is the front of the school at the bottom of the page. As part of the concept, we'd be eliminating that canopy to make way for the additions to the school. This plan shows the different types of work being done in the building. The blue represents additions to the school. The green are the heavily altered spaces, and the other spaces, although not colored, they all receive major renovations to the spaces. Yellow, of course, is the corridor circling the building. The major additions at the front of the school would be expansion of the health suite here on the right and the main offices here on the left. This is critical to allow for this hatched area in the middle, which creates a secured vestibule to the school, similar to what we've been doing in the other buildings as we renovate. This would allow students to enter and exit during pickup and drop-off times, but once school's in session, the inner row of doors would be locked down. Visitors can come into the lobby, but then they'd have to check in through a buzzer at the main office and then be released out into the school once they've been cleared. In addition to that, there's just a single-story addition over here to the right of the building. That's for some of the mechanicals that are now needed for the school. That's the emergency generator and fire pump room for the sprinkler system. As we got into the design, water tests were done on pressure, and it was determined that this building would need a fire pump to be able to handle the sprinkler system. That's due to the water pressures available in the area. As part of the balance of renovations in the school, all classrooms would be renovated, which would include wireless data connections, wireless clock systems, upgrade to the PA system, fire alarm system upgrades. On the first floor, which is the primary level, all the toilet rooms will be renovated for handicap accessibility. That's what you see here. That would mean each classroom gets its own dedicated toilet. There'd no longer be that little cut-through that exists in many of the classrooms currently, so they don't get the boys-girls scenario that they have in a lot of the schools that haven't been renovated, but unisex toilet per classroom has worked very well in the other schools. One of the other changes between classrooms, there's a lot of accordion partitions in these classrooms. Those are being eliminated for permanent built walls, and I'll show you some enlargements on some of the basic classroom configurations a little bit later. This would be an example of that, where we talked about the accordion partition. That's being eliminated to make way for casework for the student cubbies, where they hang their coats, as well as to join up there in the center with the toilet rooms. Then the teaching walls would be on these outer typical walls, which is where we'd have the smart screen projection, as well as teacher's phone, and then along the outside wall, computer stations and casework underneath the windows here at the outside. On the second floor of the school, there is a small expansion of the library to give them a little more space for program. This would allow them to have a station for computer locations, about 16 computers for student instruction on the left. On the right would be a space significant to handle a full class of students for table instruction, as well as reading, and then the stacks would be located in the center and distributed around the perimeter. What you see here along the bottom is actually the roof of the first floor, so you can see the first and second floor. Second floor steps back from the first floor. This would also allow for a workroom and circulation desk at the main entrance to the library, and renovation of the existing gang toilets adjacent to the library to allow them to have full handicap accessibility. In the core of the building on the second floor, there are currently some larger ESL classrooms. In the proposed plan, these would be reconfigured for autistic support classrooms and some additional small group rooms for sensory, and I believe OTPT would be in this upper space. You'll see in these green zones, a lot of small group rooms that have been reworked to give this school as much flexibility as they can have, because they do have a lot of special support requirements. You'll see in the upper-left here, we're taking two standard classrooms and subdividing them for ESL, as well as learning support. This is an example on the second floor. You'll see they don't have the toilets that the first floor has because they have the gang toilets. This is a view of the front of Hatfield. This would be a rendering of what it would look like once the addition is finished. You can see the existing building in the back with the addition in the front. There would be a canopy at the main entrance to, you know, show the place of entry to the school and to give it its own characteristics.
Quite homie.
Yeah, we did pick up on a gable pattern to the roof line to soften it up a little Construction schedule for the project would be starting in June of 2014 if the project moves forward. If we maintain its current schedule, we'd be looking to be out to bid in January 2014, award possibly in February, and then move into construction contracts, which would line you up nicely for breaking ground in June. You need that time to get materials ready and so forth from order and then processing. The building would then be in construction for a full year, plus the final summer, and then be ready for opening in September 2015. At Penfield Middle School, the proposed temporary mods at the building would be located along a 40-foot road, to give everybody some orientation. Elroy's here on the right, 40-foot road along the bottom of the screen. This is the front entrance to the school, to Penfield Middle School now, and a lot of the staff parking is here in this lot. The proposal would be to add 18 units of mods along the left of the existing 14 mods. This would take this baseball field out of use for that one school year, and this would provide a handicap main entrance into the mods from this lot, which would then serve as the Hatfield Elementary School parking lot for that one school year. There is a large parking lot to the northwest of the existing Penfield. That would be designated for staff for this school year during the mod phase.
So what are we going to use for baseball?
There are other, there are some other fields. This shot doesn't pick up on those, but there is, there's a field opposite right up here.
(inaudible).
Yeah.
The other thing is, it's my understanding with the renovation of Hatfield, there's...
There is no option like we had in Inglewood. You can't have students in that building when you're renovating the building, is my understanding.
It would be extremely difficult to do it at Hatfield. We did study that in some earlier presentations about what it would take to do that, and because of that circular nature of the building, we'd basically have to cut out pie wedges of the school and take them out of commission at a time. It would get very complicated with the building systems that are all fed on a circle.
Yeah, and then it increases the risk of something happening as well, when you're working on a building that close and with a bunch of children and people going in and out. It's just not a good idea.
Correct. Even the simplest things, as far as dust and sound.
Right.
Inglewood or some of the other schools, when it's a wing of classrooms, it's easier to segment and separate.
Gotcha.
At a circular building, you can separate as much as you want with some partitions, but you're still directly next to other spaces. That makes it very difficult.
And noise and all the other stuff.
Noise, exactly.
So it's all, it's just not really good.
Even access for contractors at the round building gets very complicated.
Right. Okay.
So this shows the full plan of the Penfield building, and it highlights some of the shared spaces in the school. The cyan color here would be the gymnasium. Penfield has two gyms. This one would be dedicated to the Hatfield programs for the one school year. Here in yellow is the cafeteria. The schools are coordinating scheduling-wise to make sure that Hatfield would have use of that for a dedicated time slot, and then Penfield would take over. There's obviously traveling to be done between those spaces and the mods. That would be coordinated, again, through timing of their schedules, and they'll always be escorted back and forth. Of course, I can let the administration talk a little bit more to that. Final orientation, the red here is your existing modular classrooms. Those spaces would be vacated for Hatfield use, so they would actually be using the entire existing mods, as well as these 18, to basically transplant all the functions at Hatfield over to this facility.
That was my question for the staff.
Yes, yeah, so we'd have classrooms. There are some lockers located in the Penfield mods currently. They do need them for use by students for Penfield, so we'd actually be relocating those lockers into some of the long corridors at various locations within Penfield, so they wouldn't lose use of locker space. And Hatfield would actually take advantage for a year of those locker alcoves for some of their small office functions, so trying to be as efficient as possible with that. This is just an enlargement of the mods at Penfield for Hatfield. We would have a small secured lobby off of what would be a main office here at this knuckle between the two buildings. There are two good sets of gang toilets in the existing Penfield mods. They are sized adequately to handle the full Hatfield population at this building, so you would not need to add additional toilets in this wing. There will be a space dedicated to health suite, and then you can see a lot of smaller spaces within the mods to handle all those small specials that Hatfield currently has. Just a summary of the activities at Hatfield Elementary School. We have full roof replacement, accessibility upgrades throughout the building. That includes a handicap lift at the stage. Also, the existing elevator is too small and not up to current code or accessibility, so that shaft would be rebuilt for handicap accessibility. All the toilet rooms throughout the building would be renovated. Kitchen would be reconfigured and equipment replaced. Main office and health suite renovations. We talked about the secured vestibule. Classroom renovations. In addition to the systems we discussed, we'd also be doing, you know, repainting of the rooms, new ceilings, new lighting with high-efficiency fixtures, lighting control systems in the building to help manage and stay energy conservation. Building suppression system throughout the building, floor finishes, doors. Casework, which is your cabinetry, would be replaced to meet the new configurations. Many of the windows in the school were replaced back in, I believe, 2003, so we would not be just replacing all the windows in the existing school. There are some panels that would be replaced to help tie the two buildings together, the additions in the existing, but basically we'd be able to maintain the majority of the windows that were done previously. The heating system in the building, currently, they have the ceiling radiant panel systems, which are, they've exceeded their natural life. We'd be putting in a system similar to what we've done at Inglewood and the other schools with thermal recovery units up on the roof and fan coil units on the outside walls. That allows for a very efficient use of your heating system in the schools. And then we'd have a digital temperature control system, which would then allow you to better manage that system, again, as you've been doing in your other buildings. You'll see undersight, we talked about the bus drop-off and the additional 48 parking spaces. We'd also be installing underground detention basins in two of the new parking areas to handle stormwater, and of course, new lighting around the perimeter of the building and in the parking lots. At the bottom right, it lists out the construction costs for the project. The renovations are estimated at 14.4 million, building additions at 1.4, and then the Penfield temporary mods, basically 1.1 million, which includes the lease costs for the mods for the one year. Any questions?
Pete, just 16895, does that include the general conditions?
If you mean general conditions, the contractor, general conditions?
Township, you know, all the things would be in the general conditions area, not, that's construction cost.
That would typically, yes, those numbers include the permit costs for the contractor to cover. If you mean costs like soft costs in the project...
Yeah, our soft cost, all the general conditions.
No, it does not include soft costs.
Township fees, permit fees, all those things.
Permit fees, yes. Township fees, no.
Okay.
This is just the hard construction costs that you'd see in the contractor's bids coming in.
You're talking another 200,000?
Inglewood Elementary School, I'd have to double-check the numbers on all the soft costs.
Yeah, because I know in the AI document, normally, your general, your first item is general conditions, which, and then usually from number 2-1, 2 to 17 is all your destruction cost.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this does not include the soft costs.
In the budget, we typically put in a number for those kinds of things. It's a miscellaneous category, and you see that on your financial...
So we're talking 17-1, 17-2?
Probably.
Okay.
You're going to put in a direct digital control for the HVAC system. Where is the control going to be maintained? Online, your office, or will the principals have control of it?
They are in a server at the high school for all of our other buildings, and that will, that will continue.
That means you've got to call the high school to get them to turn the heat on for you.
No, 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 no.
There you go. So you understand that process.
There's standalone units in the building that operate the thing regularly, but it reports back to the high school, and the program resides there.
No, well, you can only push a button for a temporary, like, 30 minutes, and then it turns back off again.
I mean, it's a server that goes down to high school, they can still operate locally, yes.
It's the range game. It's, the temperature will be between this point and this point, and anything's acceptable in those ranges, and it doesn't work that way sometimes.
Well, it goes to wish you blamed somebody if it's real cold, and they won't turn it off, you know, just look at that one.
Yeah, I'm sure that's the light's going to go down. I've seen that play out a little bit. So we have additional parking spaces. You're addressing all the other issues that we talked about. The HVAC, it'll be fully air-conditioned.
Yes.
You have all the renovations for safety requirements, the water, the fire pumps, the full system sprinklers inside requirements, and that's code anyway now. What did we leave out?
We, I don't believe we've left anything out, no. We've basically...
All right, now that I asked you that question, what did we leave out? Did you get a chance to look at this and make sure you have everything you want?
Yeah, we have. We've had several meetings throughout the year, and I think we've covered everything.
I would...
This is my first time doing this, so there may be something, but I think we've covered it.
We have this process called change orders, that you can bring forward changes as you start to see things play out and you don't like that, or maybe there's some other specialty things that you need or require in that process.
Yeah, but we don't want change orders.
They love that.
We don't want change. But we don't want change orders.
I don't even think there's a form for it, but it's a process. I would question the board, though, to make sure you understand after the year that, and then we relocate Hatfield back to their original building with all the improvements, and we celebrate that. We may find a need to go back to Penfield and refresh, and, you know, the wire and tear that we put on the building, having two school populations inside the building.
Well, we'll get a little value there.
Yeah, I know, John, but I just want to make sure that we put it on the table now, because that is a process that, you know, you put that many people in a space, you're going to have some wire and tear.
Pete, I know it said on the, it said on the right-hand side, it said fire pump station? Is that something new?
That's the pump for pressure.
Yeah, that pump basically builds up the pressure when the water gets to the building so it can fully charge the sprinkler system.
I'm sorry, is that new? You don't have, they don't have one now, do they?
No, because they don't have a sprinkler system.
But that's only because of the conditions and the water pressure in the local...
It's required by code if you can achieve the pressures that you need for the building.
Okay, okay.
We have fire pumps at North Wales and York Avenue.
Penfield has fire pumps.
Penfield, yeah.
Penfield, yes.
Okay.
So when we take the mods out, we're going to have to do something for that field, too? The ball field that we're going to...
At Penfield, yeah.
We need a baseball field. Wants to grow grass on it again.
Yeah, but that's like a big exposure.
I have a question about the mods, and to the principal, it just looks small on the picture. Do you have any reservations or questions about space and the amount of classrooms or hallways or whatever?
I did initially, but last year, what the last year? But we went over to visit, and I got to see it in person, and I think it will work fine. The other thing that we did was initially, we didn't have as many mods, but after meeting and talking through all of the spaces that we need, we were able to add a few more, so now I think we're good.
Good. That's Carol's question.
Hi, I'm just concerned that we have so many kids in mods, and I know that it's unusual, but I worry about the safety process, getting kids out of there in a hurry, especially in a weather situation. So I was a mod, I was in a mod in Nashville, Tennessee, once when a tornado hit, and it wasn't fun. So I, I mean, I just think it's so many kids that we need to have some kind of way to get them in the building quickly, and so that's my concern.
Get them in, you mean?
Get them out.
Get them out, get them out and safe in a hurry.
Well, what we'll do is when we put them up, we'll take them through, and I think they'll be impressed with it.
Okay, but I just think that's...
They really are, well, you know, they have a lot of safety features and so forth, which I think...
I know, but this situation is unique, and we need to get them out of there into the building quickly.
Yeah, you may want to exit them right into the two-story building of Penfield.
Yeah, so that's, of course, but I think that needs to be considered before the school, because you never know, and I think it's still not...
Can't we incorporate that in our emergency practices right away?
We did try to, but it's hope we did, and we were able to make it work, so we'll just have to continue our practice.
I just want to...
But yeah, that is, it's just a worry reminder for me.
Yeah, I think it'll be, it'll work, it'll work out.
Anybody else have any, want to add to this project? Mr. Schilling was able to get HVAC done, which was a nice addition.
But don't forget public comment.
Yeah, I know. I just want to make sure there's not any more comments before we take public comment. Anybody else want to add anything to this? Susan, are you cool? Because this is one of those range-controlled buildings. Can you see that? Who's that, Strobel?
I do want to thank Dr. Waters, principal of Hatfield Elementary, Mrs. McQ, the director of elementary education, and Dr. Galloway, the principal of Penfield Middle School, for being present this evening, and thank you for all the cooperation that we've gotten to be able to make this happen. It's exciting to all involved, and this is just going to be a real upgrade for that Hatfield community.
And we'll have to make sure we document this process really well. Pictures, video. We'll have a nice process to it. Now, I would like to open the public comment. If anybody wishes to make or have public comment, please step forward, state your name and address.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Pete, thank you very much.
Good work, Pete. Good job.
Hey, while he's signing in, could we also do an outreach to this project and make sure that the neighbors are all aware of what we're doing by possibly putting a brochure together for them so they can see all the processes and maybe even lay out a timeline so they're all well aware of what we're doing?
I think we could do that.
Because that might be helpful, make sure they know what's going on, too.
There, I'm done. Good evening, and my name is William Patchell, and I live at 404 Bonnie Lane, and I'd like to say good evening and congratulation to the board members that were re-elected in the current election. This is not an easy job. It takes a very unusual person to want to serve the community in this capacity, and thank you very much. With a little less than 6,000 voters casting votes, I can only draw a conclusion. There's apathy among the stakeholders. When you take the population of the district, and how many people live here, and only six, less than 6,000 people chose to exercise their democratic right and to make a decision about just the spending of over $200 million every year, it shows to me that either there's not much urgency in the public's mind when there really is, or they're just not concerned about it, and I find that hard to believe than in a quality district like North Penn has, that more people wouldn't come and vote and make their opinions known. And to participate in the dialogue would be good, but I heard very little bit of dialogue and a few things in the mail, and I know it's very expensive to send it out, but to have an informed public to make good decisions, you know, a dialogue is essential. And when only 6,000 people show up, I really wonder at times. And when only 6,000 people show up, I really wonder at times. Okay, those that want a top-quality district with quality personnel, vote. Some talk about the steps to the future, but the voters, but the voters who cared took the time, and that's a little, the time means taxpayers institute maximum engagement, and that's why they vote, and they let you know what they want. Yes, the stakeholders have spoken. Act One is important. We need to stay within the perimeters of Act One. I know how difficult it is when you're talking about renovation of schools. They just launched the Gerald Ford, the new class of aircraft carriers. They have to be able to design that to be able to handle the aircraft that'll be flying 25 or 30 years from now, so I can understand how difficult that design procedure is, to know how many people are going to be in the district, to know how many people are going to what elementary school, to know whatever, whether two charter schools pop up, so I understand, this is an incredibly difficult situation here, and we're planning the best we possibly can. That was a very nice presentation there. And Montgomery Township, there's another thing. Montgomery Township has voted to change the definition of a family, and if I was in the Philadelphia school system and I was having as much trouble as they say they're having, it would seem to me, oh, yes, we bought a house out in Montgomery Township, and we have 15 people living there, nobody's actually related, so I don't know what impact that would have on the district. So, you know, that could have real ramifications, like, wow, we used to have 12,000, now we got 15,000, nobody's related. So, that's all I wanted to say about that situation. Now, my ongoing thing has been about the concussions. Hopefully, we've had an improvement, and I've been asking every couple of weeks for the football team and the junior varsity team. Well, to sum it up, the junior varsity, by November 1st, had had five concussions, and the varsity had three. That's nine. And the only reason I get worried is because there was that numerical number, but 99 players had started August 12th, and November 1st, we have 65, so I don't know whether somebody had something, and they said, nah, I'm not going to go in and get it authenticated, because they might say, oh, well, you know, you had three already, you can't play, you can't play baseball, you can't play basketball, you know, we're keeping track of us now. So some parents are probably saying, uh, don't, let's not get into that. So that could be, that could be a serious situation, because I think that when college is now, when they start looking at your medical record, you know, he was going to play for Penn State, but he had six in his high school already, we can't, we can't possibly use him. So I think this is a big problem coming up, because it's being scrutinized, and every day I see things coming up. Now, we all know about Tony Dorsett, 59-years-old. The man was on his plane out to UCLA to get a test, and he said, I was on the plane, I couldn't even remember why I was going out to LA. I mean, it's really bad. They had a, they had a, an interview on ESPN, people need to listen to this, about chronic traumatic, it's names I could hardly pronounce, encephalopathy, CTE. It's a buildup of the TAU, it's an abnormal protein which actually debilitates the person until they don't even know who they are when they're 49 or 50. And I think it's inappropriate when we have this, seems insignificant, but you know what? I'd hate to be one of these people to emulate Tony Dorsett. I bet he'd be really unhappy about that. We need to really scrutinize this. We need to stay right on top of this. We need to shoot for zero concussions. I don't care how we do it, but you need to work on it. It's not acceptable. If you had, if you had six people in a fight in the hallway, and they, a confrontation in six people, I guarantee it would make the reporter, six people playing a game, oh, well, you know, we'll have to keep an eye on it. It's not acceptable. We cannot have people at this age, especially the junior varsity. The kid's only 15-years-old. That's too early to start getting concussions, because they're cumulative, each time you get one, and they went to another sport, oh, he got another one, oh, well, he's had eight others. He graduated high school with eight concussion? That's not acceptable. It's not acceptable, and I hope that the parents know what I'm talking about, and really think hard about signing their kids up for some of these collision sports. It's called a collision sport, not a contact. It's a collision sport. It's not acceptable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell.
Good evening, my name is Paul Edelman, and I'm from Upper Gwinnett. I'm also a former candidate for the North Penn School Board. I would like to congratulate the newly-elected board member Josie Charnock, as well as those who have been re-elected to serve the students and the taxpayers of our district, Vince, Frank, and you can pass my congratulations on to Tim. I'm also a member of the Next Step for North Penn, a group that advocates for quality public education as well as for taxpayers' concerns. Currently, the group's membership is close to 200 and climbing. This year's election was quite a contrast to the election in 2011, when board members campaigned not for themselves but against their challengers, using smear and innuendo, believing that voters would never believe anything different. Now, this year, the incumbents decided to play nice. Instead, building off, instead of building off the contempt and ire of 2011, we all opted for a mostly clean election. And it's clear that while the voters were tired of the nasty stuff, good news stories don't excite the press. There was hardly any coverage of this year's school board race, especially compared to 2011. I bring these things up for a reason. While I don't think either side is pleased with the sparse voter turnout, I'm certain the four of you who were elected are not as disappointed as the numbers show. Regardless of the results of the election, one thing I know for certain, there are nearly 200 advocates and more than over 7,000 voters who spoke volumes and sincerely hope that you have heard their concerns. My running mates and I use the phrase, no more business as usual, and on behalf of the children of the North Penn School District, that is exactly what we hope the voters brought to your attention. So now, there are no more need for board members to lie that I'm going to raise taxes 6% to 7%, as it was pointed out by Mr. Patchell, Act One prevents that, so there's a township supervisor in Tolmensen who needs to have that corrected. You won't need to lie anymore, saying I was handpicked by the teachers' union, which honestly is a ludicrous concept, if you knew anything about me. You can no longer say that I'm owned by the NPEA for the $500 that a political action committee donated to me, and fool people into thinking it was some sort of major endorsement. Seriously, $500 for my soul? Not nearly what board members get from paid contractors hired by the school district, which leads me to my final two comments. Mr. Shapinski, you were quoted on a number of occasions...
Hold on there. I had not received a cent from any paid contractor that was hired by the school district, ever, ever.
Okay.
So why would you say something like that?
I didn't mention any names, sir.
Okay, but you didn't exclude anybody either.
Yeah, would you mention a name, since you just made an accusation, yeah, since you just made an accusation on an illegal activity? Would you please mention that name?
What, what kind of activity?
You just made an accusation that we take kickbacks from vendors.
I did not say that.
What did you just say?
I said...
You just implied it for sure.
You're twisting my words around, but...
No, we're not, that's what you said. That's what you said.
Okay.
I swear to you, that's what you said. And by the way, I didn't ever made an accusation you sold your soul for $500.
No, that was my, those were my words. I mean, I, reading the press, you know, people think that I was beholden to the teachers if you elected me, which is ludicrous. Over the last two elections, Mr. Shapinski, you questioned whether we realized that this was a voluntary position, and the answer is...
Well, I never questioned that.
No.
I'm a volunteer, I know exactly what this position is.
And the answer is, of course. Over the last three years, we have worked hard because we simply wanted to do what we felt was right for the students and the taxpayers of the North Penn School District. Voluntary, yes, I get that. I worked to the point of sacrificing my health and my time with my own children, because I wanted to protect and improve their education, which of course, would have benefited others as well. I also campaigned hard to protect my taxes, because while certain candidates convinced enough people I wanted to raise their taxes, that would have been ludicrous, because that would also have raised mine. So now, without me having my own vote on the board, I must wait to find out how much my taxes will be raised in the next couple of months, if at all, as you, as has been done nearly every year. My only hope is that somehow when there are surpluses, like the $10 million that the district had a couple of years ago, when a dime wasn't put back into instruction, that any other surpluses get put back into the classroom instead of the back room. But there are a lot of other issues to be concerned about for the future of the North Penn School District. In recent weeks, the district found out that it lacks the ability to reach and communicate with its 13,000 students, in spite of a very public offers of the website. I worried about what I see happening with our transportation department. Our district needs help desperately with special education. Bullying in the North Penn School District must be dealt with, and there seems no end to renovation costs in spite of bids and contracts, as it was announced the day after the election that the Hatfield project would begin, and eventually so Montgomery Elementary, as the renovation cycle would start all over again. And of course, there are next year's contract negotiations, and I hope, I hope that somehow things are handled much better than what was done in 2009. I would urge that negotiations be kept behind closed doors where they belong. Teachers' salaries, nurses' salaries, guidance counselor's salaries do not belong in the newspaper, because raising the ire of the community doesn't really help in getting a contract on. That action alone is what started the Whole Step movement. Students and taxpayers expect progress. For now, along with being an advocate for public, for being an advocate for public education, I'm going back to the things I enjoy that took a backseat while I campaigned, being an advocate for cancer patients and survivors, an advocate for heart patients, an advocate for adopted children, but most importantly, my role as a dad. Finally, thank you to all the voters, parents, teachers, staff of the North Penn School District, and the students for their support and encouragement. Though Tina, Alex, Merle, and I fell short, this was truly an exciting experience, and I would encourage everyone to take the next step and experience what it's like to have so many people encourage you to seek out a civic privilege and serve on the North Penn School Board. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to disagree with some of your statements, so why don't you stick around at the podium for a minute, so I have an opportunity to have a frank discussion with you. First off, I'd like to say that I think we ran a clean campaign, and we did what we wanted to do, we spoke the truth, everything we used was factual. I never made accusations about you personally or any of your other running mates. I ran a campaign on issues, as far as I'm concerned. When I was asked, I answered questions, honestly. I don't take kicks back from anybody.
I never said you took kickbacks.
I disagree with what you imply, okay? The question about whether you sold your soul, I never made that accusation, I would never make that accusation. I have no problem identifying where you sought campaign contributions from, that is, public information and public records, just like it is for us.
Absolutely, and I agree.
I am not the Republican Party, okay? I am not a Republican official. They supported us, the public voted, it's over.
Absolutely.
I don't have a problem with the outcome, whether I would have lost or won.
Right.
But some of the accusations tonight, you know, it is extremely disappointing to me that you come here and make some of those types of statements, in an effort to rebuild relationships, to rebuild friendships, to make those types of experiences, that's ridiculous. Hatfield Elementary has been on the books for five years.
Longer.
Longer, probably, yeah. It's been 10 years since we put the master plan together. So some of the things that you brought up tonight were absolutely just outright misrepresentations, and nothing more than a biased mind, nothing to do with truth or fact, and it's really disappointing. And I guess maybe the voters saw through some of that, and that's why the outcome was the way it was.
Very well.
But I appreciate your thanks that I was able to come back here. I appreciate that, because I do appreciate this job and the effort and the volunteerism we all put forth. I'm sure you would have been a wonderful volunteer had you been elected, but you weren't. So, thank you for your kind words, as limited as they were. Anyone else? All right, we're moving forward with the Hatfield additions and the renovation design concepts, whatever approvals we need to come forward, let's bring them forward. Does anybody have anything else to this agenda tonight?
I'm with the director.
Motion to adjourn.